Yes, this evening. We're going to begin with an invocation. We are expecting Father Philip Pavage to join us. I'm not sure if he's here. Father Pavage, are you with us? Mayor Proton McGinnis, would you like to give the invocation?
Uh, yeah, I have something I can read.
Yes.
If we could all rise, that'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
For the invocation, I'm going to read a poem by an unknown author. It's entitled "Ruckers or Builders." "I watched them tearing a building down, a gang of men in a busy town. With a ho-heave-ho and a lusty yell, they swung a beam and a sidewall fell. I asked the foreman, 'Are these men skilled, as the men you'd hire if you had to build?' He gave me a laugh and said, 'No, indeed, just common labor is all I need. I can easily wreck in a day or two what builders have taken a year to do.' And I thought to myself, as I went my way, which of these two roles have I tried to play? Am I a builder who works with care, measuring life by the rule and square? Am I shaping my deeds by a well-made plan, patiently doing the best I can? Or am I a wrecker who walks the town, content with the labor of tearing down?"
We're going to have the Pledge of Allegiance given to us by Tiger Cub Scouts PAC 1712 from Waddles Elementary School, gentlemen.
(Crosstalk).
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, gentlemen. Nice job.
(Inaudible).
The February 20th, 2012 Troy City Council meeting is now called to order. Roll call, please, Mrs. Bittner.
Mayor Daniels.
Here.
Councilmember Campbell.
Here.
Councilmember Fleming.
Here.
Councilmember Henderson.
Here.
Mayor Proton McGinnis.
Here.
Councilmember Slater.
Here.
Councilmember Teetz.
Quorum President, I understand that Mr. Teetz is driving from Grand Rapids. He is on his way here. He is going to be late. Could someone please read the resolution excluding or excusing Councilman Teetz?
Glad to hear that.
Thank you.
We resolve that Troy City Council excuses the absence of Councilman Doug Teetz at the regular meeting of February 20th due to being driving. He's on the road, so he'll be here late, but excuse him for the opening.
Move with a second.
For it.
Moved by Councilwoman Fleming, seconded by Councilwoman Slater. Discussion. Vote, please, Mrs. Bittner.
Mayor Daniels.
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Mayor Proton McGinnis.
Yes.
Councilmember Slater.
Yes.
Motion passes. We have three items under Special Presentations. At this time, I'd also like to point out that the month of February has a number of important themes, such as President's Day, Black History Month, and I'd like to acknowledge the many contributions that the black community has made and continues to make in the weaving of the fabric of America. But also, February is American Heart Month. This national initiative was launched on September 2011 by the Department of Health and Human Services. The city of Troy is very fortunate to have a premier William Beaumont Health Systems campus right here at the southeast corner of Dequinder and South Boulevard, recognizing the contribution of the Beaumont Hospital in the field of prevention and management of heart disease. We're going to give a proclamation to Michelle Bortman, the manager of Preventative Cardiology Cardiac Rehabilitation. We also have a proclamation of appreciation to give to the many volunteers who have contributed to the Troy Family Days Festival. And then Cindy Stewart will be recognizing the Troy Employee Casual for a Cause Initiative. So if the council would like to join me at the podium? (Inaudible). Mrs. Bortman?
Oh, hi. Thank you so much. Thank you.
The city Troy proclamation for Heart Healthy Month, February 2012. Whereas heart disease is the leading cause of death for both men and women, approximately 1.2 million Americans suffer a heart attack each year in the United States, including an estimated 700,000 who will have a first heart attack and 500,000 who will have a reoccurring heart attack. And whereas in the U.S., someone has a heart attack every 34 seconds, each minute someone dies from a heart disease-related event. And in 2010, heart disease in the United States, 316.4 billion. Thank you. This total includes the cost of health care services, medications, and lost productivity. And whereas about one in five people who have heart failure die within one year from diagnosis, early diagnosis and treatment, which includes education on taking medicines, reducing salt in diet, exercise, and self-management of this disease can improve quality of life and life expectancy. And whereas it is important to recognize the signs and symptoms of a heart attack and to act immediately by calling 911, a person's chances of surviving a heart attack increase if emergency treatment is administered as soon as possible. Prevention and education is crucial to understanding this disease. And whereas Beaumont Hospital knows that the key to cardiovascular disease prevention and management is education, they are to be commended for their numerous programs, including the Heart and Vascular Screening Program, seven tests for $70, screenings to identify one's risk for heart and vascular disease, and the Healthy Heart Check, student heart screenings to identify future heart problems. And whereas Beaumont also targets women with the American Heart Association's Wear Red for Women Campaign Day, people trying to quit smoking with their smoking cessation classes, as well as the entire community with health fairs, AED education training and speaking presentations. And whereas they have developed other programs, including PATH, a new six-week program for anyone with any known chronic disease, a heart failure workshop for physicians to refer patients, to educate them on disease management, exercise, medication, and diet to improve their quality of life, as well as a community support group for people and families of those who have been diagnosed with heart disease. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council of the city of Troy take this opportunity to proclaim February as Heart Healthy Month in the city of Troy, Michigan, and be it further resolved that we invite all Troy residents to recognize the importance of education in preventing heart disease in our community, in our homes, and encourage everyone to participate in Beaumont Hospital's valuable programs and workshops supporting the prevention and management of heart disease, presented this 20th day of February 2012. Thank you very much. Did you want to say a few words, please?
I do. I just want to let you all know that the Heart Healthy Check that they do for the students, it's for ages 13 to 18 years old, I encourage you all to have your grandchildren, children, have this free screening. They're offered on an ongoing basis. The next one that's a free screening is April 27 at the outpatient Sterling Heights Building, so it's across the street from the main hospital campus. You can schedule an appointment online. I think there's only 250 slots, so please take advantage of this free screening. They are available by appointment for $25 through the Beaumont system, but take advantage of it while it's free. This program does save lives. Since May 2007, they've screened nearly 8,000 children or kids, and of those four, they have found a lethal problem with the heart. So, you know, they're stopping activity right away because this could cause death. So it's very important that your children get screened. I know most of you have heard, in the last couple of weeks, there was a young girl in Frazier, 13-years-old, passed away during her gym class. It's very important that we get the word and message out about prevention and education. And these youngsters, most likely, it's a genetic factor that's taking place, but for us as middle-aged folk and moving forward, I'm sure most of us either know somebody or a family member or a friend, or our cells have been infected by heart disease, and we have risk factors that need to be modified. So with that being said, Troy Beaumont wants to reach out to the community, so if you have businesses, you have schools, somewhere in the community that needs education, Cindy has my contact information, we'd be more than happy to come out to your organization.
Thank you. Now, we have the proclamation of appreciation for the Troy Family Days Festival. I understand members of the North Woodward Community Association here, and the Zion Christian Church as well, thank you so much for joining us. Thank you. The city of Troy proclamation of appreciation for Troy Family Days Festival. Whereas during the economic downturn, the city of Troy engaged in a massive restructuring initiative which streamlined all city departments. While protecting the core competencies of police, fire, and infrastructure maintenance, unfortunately, many quality-of-life venues were lost, including the city's Troy Days Festival. And whereas after a year hiatus, a group of dedicated community volunteers worked hard to bring back the Troy Family Days Festival from September 15 through the 18th, 2011, at Zion Christian Church on its 43-acre site on Livernoy with games, music, entertainment, and carnival rides to the delight of the Troy community. And whereas festival attendees of all ages were also able to sample food from local vendors, visit community booths, participate in contests and games, attend a special pancake breakfast, and watch a spectacular fireworks display. And whereas the North Woodward Community Foundation, with the support of Zion Christian Church, were the driving forces behind the return of the Troy Family Days Festival. Zion's churches members had participated in the festival for many years and were thrilled to set up their involvement, as well as providing a location which was perfect for this kind of community activity. Now therefore be it known that the mayor and city council of the city of Troy takes this opportunity to express its appreciation to the North Woodward Community Foundation, Zion Christian Church, and the local businesses for sponsoring the Troy Family Days Festival. And be it further known that the mayor and city council, on behalf of themselves and the Troy community, extends heartfelt appreciation to the many dedicated volunteers who work tirelessly to make the festival a very successful event, presented the 20th day of February 2012. Thank you very much, sir. Thank you. Did you want to say a few words?
(Applause).
Mayor, members of council, first of all, thank you on behalf of the entire Troy Family Days Committee and Advisory Board. We really appreciate this recognition. A lot of hard work has gone into this festival, and we're more than happy to bring it back. Back in November of last year, I was asked to speak at the Michigan Festival and Events Convention on this subject. What's happening all over Michigan is that a lot of festivals are being canceled because of government involvement. It's no longer there. So they asked me to speak on what we're doing here in Troy because it's never been done before. And it happened to be after our festival, which proved to be very successful, so I was very popular as far as people finding out what we did and what we did right and what we did wrong. And I was very happy to represent the city of Troy and all the people there who supported us at that endeavor. Because what we have said about the festival is raising money for the community, we have the, this year, we have started to give out grant money from the proceeds. As of March 1st, we will be giving the first, we'll be giving three of a series of grants out. And these people don't know about it yet. We're not go, we weren't going to announce it until March 1st, but I think this will be a good opportunity tonight, so if they're either watching, and I know one of the gentlemen is here tonight, who's going to get advantage of that grant. ARC of Oakland County is going to get a grant from the community festival. TPC, Troy People Concerned, is also going to get a grant from that festival. And the Boys and Girls Club of Troy will also be getting a grant for their Keystone and Torch Club. So we're very, very happy to be able to present those grants on behalf of the Community Foundation, Zion Church, and this entire community, because that's the closeness we wanted, and we think we've accomplished it. Right now, with me tonight is Dick Ramsdale, representing Zion Christian Church.
I'll be very brief, but just wanted to say how privileged we feel we are to be able to use the property to put on Troy Family Days and to make a contribution to the community in which we live. And we look forward to continuing those opportunities and to doing it again, so we encourage you all to come again this year. Thank you.
Thank you. (Applause). Cindy, did you want to make the presentation?
On behalf of all the city employees, I believe since our inception at the end of 2011, we've collected close to $30,000 from Casual for a Cause. So it's my pleasure to reward ARC of Oakland County. We have a check for you for $986. That's from our November and December. And I know our employees, we don't have as many as we used to, but people give very generously, oftentimes more than a dollar, to wear. So, that's for you. Thank you. And if you'd like to tell people a little bit about ARC?
Okay. I'm gonna turn around or?
Either way. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tom Kenjorsky. I'm the executive director for the ARC of Oakland County. We're a legal advocacy organization, a parents' group, and we help people with intellectual impairments and other developmental disabilities. We are located in Troy, just down the street in the Coventry Building. We've been here 19 years, although we've been the Oakland County chapter for 45 years. And essentially, the advocacy areas we deal in, we help people with disabilities to get certain governmental benefits if they're denied. We also help with special education law, go to IEP, the meetings in the schools, the IEPs, all the time. Help families plan their futures, wills, trusts, guardianships, powers of attorney, and then having to navigate the system, where to go for what. We also have recreational opportunities and just counseling and awareness, giving speeches and presentation. I'm overwhelmed by the generosity of the city of Troy. Even though I've worked here for the last 19 years, my brother and his family live in Troy, so that's good, right? Okay. And I'm very appreciative of everything you've done and, I guess, will occur in the future, too. Wonderful news. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Cindy. I'm happy to report that Councilman Teetz has joined us, so we can move on to our business. Let's see, we have a public hearing. There are no carryover items, so we have a public hearing that's scheduled for the Michigan Next Energy Exemption. Mr. Zerlag?
Thank you. I'd like to have Mr. Lucari, our city assessor, give a presentation on this matter.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. Nice to be here again. Tonight, probably for everyone, good time for a refresher course on Michigan Next Energy Exemption. This is different than anything else that you deal with. These exemptions are approved by the state. The state passed legislation in 2002 to attract alternative energy companies into the state to work on different propulsion systems, batteries, fuel sources, engine developments. There's all kinds of different things that they were trying to attract with this program. In Troy, we've had two companies since 2005 that qualified under these. They both worked on batteries for electric cars and hybrids. We had United Solar, Ovonics, and we had, at the start, Compact Power, which was a company that was formed between Chrysler and General Motors to develop the battery systems for their hybrid vehicles. United Solar Ovonics, as you may have read recently, is in bankruptcy court. They're not applying for an exemption this year. LG Chem, which is a global corporation that works on multiple different fuel sources, batteries, solar panels, roof shingles, insulation, air-driven automobiles, it's a very large corporation. They bought out Compact Power about three years ago. What the law does is it exempts these companies' personal property from any personal property taxes. That includes the school districts, intermediate schools, Oakland County, transportation, the Zoo Authority, the city's own millage rate, debt. Every single millage that you can levy against a personal property is exempted by this. It does give those entities the option of opting out. In other words, the council could levy their tax, our 10.19 mills, against this company's personal property. That has not happened in the past. They've had their exemption since 2005. Obviously, they're requesting an extension on it. The other thing that you should know about this law is that it sunsets this December, actually, January 1st of 2013. So they would have one more year where they could purchase personal property and qualify as an exempt entity. After that point in time, the law expires, and so would their exemption. Anything else they would purchase at that point in time would become taxable. I have spoken with the Troy School District, I've spoken with Oakland County and all of their entities, the community college, the ISD, the Transportation Authority, the Zoo Authority, none of those entities intends to opt out. They will all allow the company to be exempt. And without a resolution to the contrary, you would be doing the same. So it's, obviously, it's management's wish and recommendation that you approve the exemption for this company and move them forward. Again, they have one more year where they could purchase the equipment, and I can answer any other questions you might have.
Are there any questions? Thank you, Mr. Lucari.
Thank you.
Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone from the audience who would like to speak on this issue? Okay. The hearing's now closed, so we'll return the item to the council table for resolution. Could I have the resolution moved forward, please? Councilman Slater?
We resolve that the city council of the city of Troy affirms the Michigan Next Energy Exemption of Alternative Energy Personal Property located at 1857 Technology Drive, Troy, Michigan, as certified by the city assessor in an amount not to exceed $2,458,258, a copy of which shall be attached to the original minutes of this meeting, and be it further resolved that the city clerk of the city of Troy shall forward a copy of this resolution and attachments to the Michigan Next Energy Authority at 300 North Washington Square, Lansing, Michigan, 48913. Yes or no?
Seconded by?
Seconded.
Councilman Campbell, discussion? Councilman Teetz?
I'll be voting no, for the same reasons many other times that this program gives preferential treatment to some businesses over others. It should be noted as well that this business pays zero in property taxes to any entity, so it's just a basic unfairness that I oppose, and hopefully, this will be the first time that everyone joins me and votes no.
Further discussion? Manager Slater, uh, manager, I'm sorry. Well, I've now called him a councilman, I've called him a manager? Goodness. Managers, Zerlag, my apologies. I spoke with a Troy business owner today, and he said that there were other ways to offer incentives, such as a targeted area road improvement or a right-of-way enhancement that might encourage the other businesses around the particular targeted business to expand and grow. And I'm wondering what your thoughts are on that, as opposed to a tax abatement?
Well, thank you, Your Honor. I really have two thoughts on that. One is that it's absolutely important, and I agree that, as does staff, that you need to have excellent infrastructure in place to attract business, water, sewer, streets, sidewalks, streetlights. And to that end, city council, in their wisdom, has allocated a rolling six-year, $100 million capital improvements project. And it not only benefits businesses, but it benefits residents as well, as well as the traveling public. Council does have another policy to target specific streets that are in need of either reconstruction or widening. It's called the special assessment program. And the affected property owners, the policy is that if at least half of them agree to a special assessment, a portion of that is paid by the city at large and a portion by the adjoining property owners. The, so I agree with targeting certain areas for needs in terms of special assessment. In terms of tax abatements, when this issue first came out several years ago, probably a couple decades ago, I had the same philosophy that Mr. Teetz has at this point, that the best way to attract business is to have a low tax rate for everyone. That made sense. But what happened is that in terms of economic development, as well as a pro forma or someone's balance sheet in the private sector, part of their motive is a profit motive, and if they can reduce costs in one city versus another, because one city offers tax abatement and another city doesn't, chances are, that business would not come to the city that's not offering tax abatement. And so, I think, and you can correct me, out of the 400 and some cities in the state of Michigan, only two do not offer tax abatements. And we could be one of the, we could be a city like that that does not offer tax abatement, but I'm confident that if a corporation was looking at going somewhere else, and we could not offer that abatement, philosophically, we want to have a low tax rate for everybody, but in reality, there's a possibility that business would go somewhere else. And the best example I can think of is Meritor, it used to be Arthur Meritor. We actually had to compete with the governor of Ohio that I think was going to offer better tax breaks than we were offering in Troy, but Meritor was convinced to stay in Troy. I can try to get a letter from Meritor that would justify what I just said. But again, the philosophy of tax abatements and why they're given is really up to the city council.
Okay. Councilman Teetz?
Well, maybe someday when I grow up, I'll agree with Mr. Zerlag, but in the meantime, I think this particular example shows why tax abatements don't work. The other business that had this preferential treatment for, I believe, 10 years or so, thereabouts, and paid zero taxes to any governmental entity all those years, while the rest of us picked up, carried the freight, went out of business. And though I, I respect your opinion as city manager, I disagree with the basic premise. Everyone in the city, including every business, should be treated fairly and equitably by the city council. So we'll vote as we will, but I wanted to put my two cents in.
Any other comments? A vote, please, Mrs. Bittner?
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Proton McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
No.
Mayor Daniels?
No. Motion passes. We'll move now to public comments. I'd like to remind the audience that all comments are to be directed to the council rather than to city administration or to the audience. Also, there's a timer here that turns yellow when there's one minute of speaking time remaining, and the timer turns red when the speaker's time is up. In order to make the meeting move more orderly and respectfully, please do not clap during the meeting, and please do not use expletives or make derogatory or disparaging comments about- And to that end, city council, in their wisdom, has allocated a rolling six-year, $100 million capital improvements project. And it not only benefits businesses, but it benefits residents as well as a traveling public. The council does have another policy to target specific streets that are in need of either reconstruction or widening. It's called the special assessment program. And the affected property owners, the policy is that if at least half of them agree to a special assessment, a portion of that is paid by the city at large and a portion by the adjoining property owners. The, so I agree with targeting certain areas for needs in terms of special assessment. In terms of tax abatements, when this issue first came out several years ago, probably a couple decades ago, I had the same philosophy that Mr. Teetz has at this point, that the best way to attract business is to have a low tax rate for everyone. That made sense. But what happened is that, in terms of economic development, as well as a pro forma or someone's balance sheet in the private sector, part of their motive is a profit motive. And if they can reduce costs in one city versus another because one city offers tax abatement and another city doesn't, chances are that business would not come to the city that's not offering tax abatement. And so I think, and you can correct me, out of the 400 and some cities in the state of Michigan, only two do not offer tax abatements. And we could be one of the, we could be a city like that that does not offer tax abatement. But I'm confident that if a corporation was looking at going somewhere else, and we could not offer that abatement, philosophically, we want to have a low tax rate for everybody, but in reality, there's a possibility that business would go somewhere else. And the best example I can think of is Meritor, it used to be Arthur Meritor. We actually had to compete with the governor of Ohio that I think was going to offer better tax breaks than we were offering in Troy. But Meritor was convinced to stay in Troy. I can try to get a letter from Meritor that would justify what I just said. But again, the philosophy of tax abatements and why they're given is really up to the city council.
Okay. Councilman Teetz?
Well, maybe someday when I grow up, I'll agree with Mr. Zerlag. But in the meantime, I think this particular example shows why tax abatements don't work. The other business that had this preferential treatment for, I believe, 10 years or so, thereabouts, and paid zero taxes to any governmental entity all those years while the rest of us picked up, carried the freight, went out of business. And though I respect your opinion as city manager, I disagree with the basic premise. Everyone in the city, including every business, should be treated fairly and equitably by the city council. So we'll vote as we will, but I wanted to put my two cents in.
Any other comments? A vote, please. Mrs. Bittner?
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Proton McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
No.
Mayor Daniels?
No. Motion passes. We'll move now to public comments. I'd like to remind the audience that all comments are to be directed to the council rather than to city administration or to the audience. Also, there's a timer here that turns yellow when there's one minute of speaking time remaining, and the timer turns red when the speaker's time is up. In order to make the meeting move more orderly and respectfully, please do not clap during the meeting, and please do not use expletives or make derogatory or disparaging comments about any one person or any group. If you do so, there may be immediate consequences, including having the microphone turned off. You're being asked to leave the meeting and/or the deletion of speaker comments for any rebroadcast of the meeting. Speakers should also be careful to avoid saying anything that would subject them to civil liability, such as slander or defamation. Please avoid these consequences and voluntarily assist us in maintaining the decorum befitting this great city. We have Oh, we have about 18 speakers. First on the list is Steve Toth. Mr. Toth?
Good evening, Mayor, city council. Like to share a couple items with you tonight. One is, well, actually, I'm wearing my Boys and Girls Club hat tonight, and I want to say thanks to one of our donors tonight. I appreciate that checkup, becoming to the Boys and Girls Club. But I'm talking about the PNC Taste of Troy. Our annual event in this 20th year will be held at the San Reno Club. This event is a community-wide event that brings nearly 1,000 people together for an afternoon at the San Reno Club. The flyers were presented to the council members, and it's available with me or anyone else that is associated with the Boys and Girls Club. Tickets are available to join everyone, to enjoy the food of 30 restaurants, to do an auction, to meet with your friends, to make new friends, to come together as a community under one roof to support the Boys and Girls Club. This is our largest fundraising event. It supports us to the tune of almost 15% of our operating budget. It's been a big impact. And again, I'd like to invite all of you here and to our event, knowing that tickets are available. Go to the Boys and Girls Club or look to our volunteers. This event has been very successful, thanks to the volunteers at the Boys and Girls Club. And one who I want to recognize tonight is our chair for this event, who's been at the leadership helm for the Taste of Troy for six years, and that is Cindy Stewart, our director of communication for the city of Troy. So I want to recognize her leadership, as well as her leadership for two years as the president of our board as well. So she's here somewhere. She was running around. But I do want to recognize that that lady has a lot of energy, a lot of positive attributes, and she loves the kids. So that's one of the reasons why a lot of people support our organization. The second item I want to share with everyone is I just want to thank council. I want to thank the city staff. I want to thank the relationships I've had. Some of you may be aware that I'm retiring next month. So my opportunities now is to train the new executive director. He's just started today. His name is Jeff Evans. The next few weeks, I'm going to take him around in the community. But in that timeframe, I get to share my knowledge, but I also get the chance to say thank you. And what better way to say thank you but to you folks, because through your leadership and the many years that I've had leadership to the club, we've impacted many kids. And this club will stay strong. It'll continue to impact many kids. So thanks to you folks, the past city council members, the city staff. You know, for 16 years I've been at the helm of the Boys and Girls Club, I just want to say thank you. And I just hope that when times get better, if there's opportunities to support what we do with the kids, especially those who may need help, because we do miss having our social worker. Now, as we look at the tough times we have here and looking at the community that we have, Troy is a strong community. But unfortunately, when you're trying to get grants, people say, "You're in Troy. You don't need grants." So we really rely on our community. That's our individuals, our corporations, anyone else who cares about the kids. If there ever be a possibility that we can get a social worker so we can make a meaningful impact in partnership with other nonprofits, I appreciate that. So that's my last calling of asking for help. Thank you, and good luck to your future as well.
Thank you very much. Ellen Walters?
Good evening, Mr. Walters. Ah, yes. This has to do with the traffic on Boyd and possibly shutting down the entrance into Baker Junior High and to your learning, or to your academy. One day, I was taking a walk, and I saw a lady counting cars in front of the entrance into, off of Boyd into Baker Junior High. I asked the lady what she was doing. She was counting cars to give to the city for her complaint. One thing I noticed there on the entrance to the school, when I was standing there talking to her, was the people stopping to let the kids cross the ravine. So when I talked to the city council member here and mentioned to him that you should have at least guard rail up there, if you put guard rail up there, there's no place for kids to cross because they'll be trapped between cars and the guard rail. You roughly have 16 and a half feet there into the school. Your asphalt's deteriorating, and the proper, there's only really one good side to cross there at the ravine going into Baker for the kids coming into school, walking or on their bikes. I'd like to see that. But they have to cross the street twice to get, if they're on the right side of the street, where they have to cross the street twice to get over to the school because only one side you can really cross on, which is the east side. And there's no lighting there for the kids. There's no sidewalks, no guardrails. You got roughly an eight-foot drop-off, and it's very dangerous. And also, looking at the street, walking up and down, I take my morning walk, and I go out in the morning and check out the neighborhood. I see mailboxes bent towards the way the traffic is going, east, west. And then I'm looking at property. I look at the property at 1204 Boyd on the corner where your buses and cars cannot make a turn. They have to stop and wait for people to leave the stop sign because the roads are only roughly 18 feet wide. At the corner of 1204 Boyd in Daley where the property is, the people have driven up on the lady's property roughly two feet. I stood there and watched them in the morning. They drive right up over her grass. The, geez, it's this far from the road to her property. That's all tore up. One morning, I was standing there. I seen somebody drive up over her property, smack her mailbox, and I tried to stop them, but they took off. But the problem of the school, of the situation on Boyd is mainly a lot to do with the school. You've got buses turning in front of traffic in your own parking lot. You've got cones out there. I don't know what engineer put the planning in for the cones coming off of Torpey into the middle school. It's just, it doesn't make sense. And I've noticed in it, you've got buses idling that get stopped by other traffic, waiting to pick up kids on another bus, setting off people's alarms, and that goes on every now and then. And the language that's used by the people that use the street, also the lady at 1204 told me, "By the time her kids reach kindergarten, they'll know the F-word." And then she said, "Thanks to the Troy school system, the kids will know that." I was, that was kind of crazy. Her husband's car, from what I heard, has been damaged by people going around other cars illegally and hitting him. You also have cars that have to back in on Boyd because they can't get out in the morning. To live in a subdivision, where you've got to do all these things, if people live in subdivisions, why would you like to pull in every day and make sure you back in so you can pull out in the morning? And putting no parking signs on Boyd all the way down is kind of ridiculous because there's people that have lawn services, handicapped people, people come to service them in the morning. So they've got to remember this. People have to change their schedule for you. And Boyd was never a school street. Now it is. Look at the damage to your commercial vehicles and the residents coming in to drop off their kids, what they have done to the street. If you look at Hartland and you look at Torpey, they're in great shape. Hartland is just a speed, a speed street so people can zip down it and avoid traffic. It's only, it's only roughly 18 feet wide on Boyd, and they also proposed to widen the street. And even talking to the city here when they had a meeting, that they said 24 feet, put in a street 24 feet wide when streets like Rain Tree are 26 with one-foot curves. Rain Tree has 10 feet from the sidewalk to the road on both sides. You ain't going to put that in at 24 feet and put sidewalks in because you're going to have people like at 1122 Boyd. They open the door, they'll hit somebody in the sidewalk with their storm door, and then they're going to lose a couple steps getting down to the road.
Thank you, Mr. Walters. That, your time was up?
Ah, okay. I still have more to say, but I'm next up.
Apologize.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Roger Walters?
Hi, Mayor Daniels. It's a pleasure to be here. This is directed towards the Boyd Street deal. My brother pretty much told you most of it. We met with you, and we showed you some other things. We met with different options. We came with different options. We had a meeting on January 25th with Gerald Stelnick, Captain, a few people that are probably, I see that they are in this room in case any people didn't know about this. There was a meeting on the 25th in this building downstairs. So I don't know if, well, no, none of you guys were there. Isn't that amazing? But it's kind of funny that, you know, and nobody was told about this. When we sat there, when we asked about the Boyd Street issue, and like my brother said it, 1204, the damage and the high rate of speed, even if you put no parking on the one side, that still doesn't stop the 250 approximately cars in that 35 to 45-minute span. So you have to see, you have to actually view it to know it. Okay? You have to be there to see it to know it. And like you were talking about, the property damage, the property damage has gotten astronomical. Okay? The school is liable for it because actually the parents are, people are going, are liable for it. But if we didn't have the traffic going to the school, we shut that down. Here's a map that they had, I had, gave you too, that opening up Wakefield, opening up Charrington, I believe that's what it is, opening up the part of Charrington, that would be able to, it's Ardmore, no, Charrington, which would be able to accommodate the school. Even Wakefield would be able to accommodate the school. You wouldn't have to put our signs in front of our street, nor would you have to destroy our property. All property damage would stop. The entrance at, the driveway entrance at Boyd Street, going into Baker IA, like my brother had told you. It is an unsafe, it's so unsafe that I wouldn't walk my rat across it if I had one. That's how unsafe it is. That's, it's just, I can't believe that, that the school heading, I've got a camera in front of me. Pictures tell all the stories, so it's not an issue. So if you'd like to see them, it's not a problem. I showed you already. So if you want to see them, that's not a problem. I took enough pictures to show property damage that at 1204, somebody owes this lady about that much property, at least, you know? And they owe her and the rest of us the respect to live there on the street, and we're not getting that. So you want to accommodate the school, but what about accommodating all the people who live there? Like Ms. Atkins, she's lived there since I was born. She's lived there since my brother was born. I mean, we're dinosaurs now. So, you know, it's not like, "My parents still live there." So do you think that it should be opened up or, like we had talked about, I don't think it's fair that the residents, like you were talking about, being opened up and then it's split in taxes. Well, taxpayers pay the taxes for the school, and we pay the taxes anyhow. So we're being taxed, retaxed for something that, you know, so this doesn't make sense. It's like taxpayers are just getting sucked down the toilet. It's just, literally. I mean, and I know what's going to happen in the outcome of this is because here's two options, Wakefield, Charrington. You leave Boyd alone. That's not a problem. That's a community by itself. You drove by it. You've seen it. You, like you were saying, no guardrails on the side. I wouldn't walk my granddaughter across that. I would walk her up to Boyd and walk down the sidewalk into Baker to take her over that way if I wanted to. But it's a school. Why would I want to take my granddaughter to it? And, you know? But still, you know, just even take her for a walk. I can't cross her down there because it's dangerous. There's no guardrails. If you put up guardrails, it's impassable. And then I believe it's Ms. Hill that's in here too. She'll tell you too. There has been no safety net for her home from the school. They had a lady at 1104, I believe it is, where they ran across her property from IA. Everything's standing from IA, period. And then you want to try to regulate our street for the school? That doesn't make any sense. We lived here all of our life. Why don't you regulate the school? And do it that way? I think that would be more than the appropriate way to do things. If you stop the flow of the traffic from the school off our street, there isn't a problem. There's no problem. I talked to the fire chief and once, not long ago, he said to me that he didn't have any problem. And I talked to Sergeant Siminski on the personal side, and they had even asked him, and I told him I wouldn't, he can deny it too anyways, and I really don't care. And I told him too, my personal opinion is that, and I talked to the fire chief, he said too as well, that shutting down the driveway, that's what it's, that's what it is. It's a driveway. It's not even, I don't know, whatever you want to call it. It's not even up to Department of Transportation standards, vehicle standards. It's that rotted way. Like you said, it's got a one-foot drop. It's just unbelievable with the five-foot drop. So I don't know. It's taken away so much from everybody over there. It's just unbelievable. And putting signs up, you know, that doesn't make no sense. So we suggested that, what if we put up a gate there and use it as an emergency exit entrance only? That solves the problem.
Thank you, Mr. Walters.
Thank you.
Next is Lynn Wright. Lynn Wright?
I just want to say good evening here. But basically, I'm talking like everybody else. I've been on Boyd Street in that subdivision as long as I can remember. And first, I'd like to say, I was on Big Beaver, and I know in the back of that subdivision. My basically problem is with this whole thing is that I do have kids in the school district, okay? In the last two to three years, I may have problems. Just to get my kids on a bus, I had, there is two different kinds of buses that my kids ride, a small one and a big one. Just to get her across the street, or my kids, just to sit even an inch off our property, get on that bus, these kids and these cars that are roaming by, even part of my property is damaged now. There's no way in the world that these cars can get past these buses, even if they waved them on and they're on the same side where the property is, and they don't have to cross the street. I mean, my kids, there was one incident where my kid had to cross the street, and a car didn't almost stop because she's crossing the bus, you know, just to catch the bus. And these cars going by, I see even when they're not in school, it's gotten so retarded over there. They open those streets, you're asking for somebody to get killed for these kids to just to catch the bus. I mean, it's a free public school. And the other problem is, I see these kids walk, and they go through that side street and down Boyd Street just to walk to Athens, some of these kids. And I even tried it myself one morning with one of my kids. And it's just ridiculous how you guys can dare open Boyd Street to all this traffic, even to the Academy School and the Baker Mill School, when I seen that thing get built since day one. It's terrible because with this, my front lawn is damaged now. I can put grass in, and it's not going to come back because there's no way these cars can pass by at all. And like Roger said, I know there is side streets that they shouldn't consider before they even touched Boyd Street. When they filled that with the school and everything, we had construction trucks and everything on Boyd Street going on my property just to get through to build that school. And that was, like, unbelievable, even to get my kids on the school bus back then. And like I said, this is crazy. Open it up and assert, you're going to end up somebody killed on that road because these kids are way, you know, you've got little ones who crying out loud, trying to get to the bus stop, trying, I mean, the big bus, I mean, come on. You're telling me for a big bus in mainly that one corner of Boyd and Daley is the main big bus stop from 6:00 in the morning all the way almost at least about 10 after 9:00, quarter after 9:00, give or take. And the timeframe's on this, you've got to be kidding me. I mean, this timeframe from 7:15 to 8:15, they don't even get, the bus goes at least till 9:00. And the time that the high school, even the high school to get home, they don't even get out till 2:04. And next year, they're changing all this timeframe again. Some of the elementary is changing their timeframe in the morning. And what's going to happen then? I mean, there's, you even put a sidewalk, I swear to God, and you can hand a cup of coffee, and here you go. Bus driving, you want a cup of coffee for this morning? No, before you take off with kids. There is no room for a sidewalk, no room for anything because you're cutting right then into our front doorsteps. These front properties, you know, are not that big. They're small. I mean, the sidewalk, the width of sidewalk, me walking down there, the width of that sidewalk to put in front of my property at that corner to go all the way up to Rochester Road, you are literally almost at the front doorstep. There is just no way in the timeframe, the road, and same, you're talking about, you take a guardrail... take a guardrail, you take stop signs, I know they had to petition before putting stop signs, traffic, something at the four-way corner. You put that, there is no way. And even cops were there, you know.
Thank you so much. Stephen Teig?
Mayor, good evening, City Council. This is, I'm going to try and make this as quick as possible, but I just want to say I'm recent, I recently moved here. I did some research of this city before I moved here, talked to a lot of people who lived up here, and all of it was positive. Never heard a negative thing said about this city. Decided to get more politically active last week, or last couple of weeks, I came to the last city council meeting and sat here and heard what was said to you guys and what was said to Mr. Shepke. So I'm going to try and read this as fast as possible. I did a line item veto of many things so I could get it condensed. So I hope I can get through it. So, a couple of weeks ago I came to this building to gain some insight into the challenges facing Troy and become a little more politically engaged. But instead of learning about city business and government, I witnessed a parade of half-informed diversity activists focusing on a political distraction. In essence, trying to blame the Troy City Council for creating an atmosphere that promotes hostility. We even got lectured by a man who sounded like some kind of grand inquisitor from the state civil rights bureau. I found this kind of ominous governmental menacing of all of you a bit frightening. It sounded like we all better start packing our bags for the reeducation camp if we didn't shape up. All of the outrage was in reference to a man using a term that combines two words, Chinese and communist, and merely illustrates national identity and a political philosophy, not a race slander. In the end, Mr. Shepke, the primary focus of all the indignation, spoke his piece. In my eyes, he was the shining light of reason out of the whole event. I would also be tempted to demand an apology for Mr. Shepke, but I don't think we need to be focused on this stuff anymore, and I'm certain Mr. Shepke has moved on and forgiven and forgotten. The remarks of all these people were directed at all of us, the council and the citizens, not just Mr. Shepke. They were informing us that we had fallen short as a city. It appears that all of this is hype designed to distract from real issues facing our city and generate controversy. They're jumping at every possible perceived slight to discredit the mayor and any council people or nominees who disagree with their philosophies. This hypersensitivity is counterproductive. There was also a woman who spoke about one Mr. Chin who was brutally killed by some actual intolerant people. I once heard someone say that some of vignettes does not equal data. I have seen no data and heard no outcry about increased violent racially motivated attacks in Troy. I would have never moved here if that was the case. So, a vignette about Mr. Chin, which took place in 1982 in Highland Park, in my eyes, was used unjustly to generate emotion and skew facts. This tactic is employed to psychologically bully people when there's no hard data to back up one's beliefs. It employs emotion to overcome logic. Dredging up a murder from 1982 to illustrate a non-point is no, in no way reflective of the current atmosphere in Troy, where people from all different ethnic backgrounds walk safely with their families through my neighborhood every day. Final thing, I chopped out a whole paragraph here, but I wanted to hit on diversity based on the statements of the state official that was here and everybody else who came up here and spoke. So my final statement to you will be on diversity. We were told last council meeting to celebrate diversity. Preaching the gospel of diversity, however, focuses us on that which makes us different. A society that is constantly trumpeting the virtues of differentness will end up with a bunch of factions identifying tightly with their own special groups and less with the whole. One of the speakers improperly used the motto e pluribus unum to try to emphasize a point on diversity. The way it was used was actually to promote more of an ethos of e pluribus pluribus. Pluribus is not the focus of that motto. I would ask that we acknowledge and appreciate diversity, but celebrate unity. Put our emphasis on the unum, not on the pluribus. Diversity without unity is no good. We have a beautiful city with a glorious mix of people, of countless ethnicities, all adding individual value to the tapestry of the city's culture and future, but in the end, our differences are not what make us great. Our greatness comes from that which unifies us as one city, one state, or one country. With unity, our ethnic and social differences enrich us. With the dogma of diversity, they serve to separate us. If we stop focusing on difference and start focusing on what unifies us, maybe we can create a better atmosphere with less anger, self-loathing, frustration, and venom. So please, let's stop the gotcha politics and pointless recall efforts and move forward with the real business of this extraordinary, impressive city. I think all of us are above this, and I appreciate what all of you do as elected officials and with what you have to put up with a lot of times. And I know it's a calling, and good luck with all of it, and I hope to live here for a very, very long time. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Marv Reinhardt?
Afternoon, Madam Mayor Daniels. About the heart problem, my dad died at 53 because of the stress of this city, okay? He gave me a list of names that he was working with and people he didn't want. So I didn't bother with it because I've been all over the world, okay? Give you an idea, I called the Girls International Boys and Girls Club for a question, 45 minutes later, this Girls Boys and Club banned me from their thing. Wonder why they're not getting their grants, okay? The Troy schools banned me from their ground. Where's the train show? Okay? Like I said, I got Operation Drain the Swamp working in this city, okay? But the bright side of it, President Obama is using the Reinhardt programming. That was a program that Hitler put together. He introduced the Volkswagen. Obama's going to introduce the Volt. He merged all the trade unions, and Obama's doing that. That is the Reinhardt programming. So if you don't think I know what's going on, I know what's going on, okay? I can't stop it, I just ride along with it. Your Troy police has continued to harass me and got me banned from every Kroger in the United States. So when that thing works out, I'm going to take that profit and finish off the city. So you guys have a good time trying to bring business to this city because, as Michelle Hodges knows, my dad started the chamber, okay? I know a lot of business across the United States, and when they ask me about it, I tell them who they can bribe first in this city to get the best stuff, and second, don't come in this city because you're going to lose. And as far as the alternative EDS, EDC stuff, in the 80s, 85, when we had the last power problem in this city, Germany and Japan bought every alternative energy company in this America and stripped it of its patents. Then they resold most of the businesses back to Americans, and Americans are working the patents that they used to have in these companies. You can double check that if you want, but like you said, you don't want to talk to me, I, I, I will break the city. Have a good day.
Diane Alady?
I'm here also to speak on Boyd Street. I live directly across from the school driveway, so my house faces the school, and I see all the traffic coming and going from that driveway. I spoke on this at the January 25th meeting, and I've also spoke about Boyd Street several years ago, when West Oak Sub was being built. And at that time, there was consideration of opening our street for a traffic flow, a traffic flow through West Oak and on into Rain Tree Sub. And at that point, it was closed and has remained closed until this day with an Eva at Harmony and at the end of Boyd. And in reading item I-6, I see there was some consideration for reopening those. And the situation today is worse than it was then with all the additional traffic we're having because of the International Academy being placed right there. And I'm very concerned about it. I'm concerned from what I have viewed from the front of our house since last September, and I fear for the children that walk there. There's not a lot of children compared to coming in from the north end at Rain Tree, but I don't want to see one child get injured because of that traffic. And I also took some videos last fall, and if I look at those videos, it terrifies me when I see the children there, mixed in with all that traffic in the street. I am thankful that the school buses were rerouted over to Torpe. That has helped some, but not enough. The problem there is the traffic from the International Academy. We've lived at that house for 27 years and knowingly purchased that house that it was a school bus route there, so we had no problem with the school buses and never have. The problem has been with the vehicles that are needed to get the children to the academy. I would like to ask for some assurance that both the Eva's will remain as they are with the permanent barriers, barriers that are there now at the end of Harmony and also at the end of Boyd. At the January 25th meeting, I also asked for a stop sign to be placed at the end of the school driveway. There is a yield sign there now. I know it's been mentioned by several of the police officers that sit out there in the morning to say that the parents are observing the yield sign for the most part, but as soon as they're gone, the vehicles coming through there know that they're gone, and a lot of them churn right out into there. There's been, luckily, there has not been a serious accident there, but there's been a lot of close calls there. At our January 25th meeting, there was also talk of putting a raised sidewalk in at the side of that driveway to make it safer for the children to walk to either school. And I did not see any mention of that in item I-6, and I would like to know if that raised sidewalk is still a consideration to help increase the safety for those children. And in closing, I would say, we did okay in the neighborhood until the academy came along. And I, I don't know how that academy got built there in such a small area, but it did, and now we're trying to find a way to live with it, but it is very difficult. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard Peters?
Yeah, evening, Council, folks in Troy. I heard tonight a little bit about this energy business here, and the term winners and losers is, I don't know, it's kind of a convoluted term in a way because, you know, we see that oil dairy up there on 18 Mile Road, and it has oil depletion allowances. I often wonder if, you know, maybe the right wing or the conservative element, they'd favor doing away from that. I know the gas prices are jumping up a little bit, and we're about ready to jump into two wars over in Asia, over in the Middle East somewhere, and I'm just wondering if it would be better to pass the transportation bill, which relates to us with this Troy Train Center. I don't understand the logic behind it, to be honest about it. Also, a few years ago, Lake Erie, you know, Lake Erie, it went belly up, so to speak. You couldn't fish in it, couldn't swim in it, it had all kinds of algae and stuff. This goes back to that winners and losers stuff. I think High Holg River actually set right on fire one day, and the people couldn't believe it. So when you start talking about this stuff, it's like, well, the Black Plague, or the plague in the Middle Ages, it happens and you're not supposed to do nothing about it because if you do, that's picking winners and losers. So you kind of get the drift of what I'm trying to say tonight. And also, let's see here, I think that's about it. Oh, one other thing too, I wonder if Congress could maybe talk to India, let India talk to Iran a little bit, and maybe Turkey, and those Middle East countries somewhat, so maybe we could use their influence to maybe tone down the issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Wasim Kamel? Wasim Kamel?
Actually, it's attorney, but this is my client.
Well, he's signed up for public comment. Did you want to speak also? Did you sign up?
No, actually, we're just here for the item number I-9. For Troy smokers.
Well, you could talk during the, during the presentation?
It's on the.
Madam Mayor, since we have one public comment, you know, certainly, Council may have questions for them when the I-9 comes, but if they wanted to take advantage of this opportunity at this point in time, certainly there is public comment and it would be appropriate to listen.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Oh, no, it's appropriate that you speak now, yeah.
Okay, come on up. This is regarding I-9, correct? This is Mr. Kamel, who is the president of Kamel Management, Inc., and has applied for a SDM license at the location, it's called Troy Smokers, DBA Troy Smokers. He has complied with all of the requirements for the MLCC. He actually does, he is a shareholder now in a STD/SDM license business. He does qualify. His partner also qualifies. We were informed that, by the Troy police, that the matter was denied by them, that it was going to be either approved or denied here before the council members. So, I'm not quite sure why the Troy police have denied the application. I wasn't given a reason. But we did come here tonight to see possibly if it's going to be approved. We don't know yet, obviously, item I-9 has not come up yet, so we're just respectfully requesting that it be approved. I think they've met all the requirements. Really don't see a reason as to why it would be denied. Other cities have allowed smokers outlets to have the SDM license. It's going to improve his business, and I'm not sure if there's any downside to it, but maybe if any of the council members might have something, or somebody in the audience might. We're respectfully request that it be approved. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Ann Bernardi?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The face of Troy is changing as clear-cutting of our Troy trees is occurring at an alarming rate ever since the new zoning ordinances have been adopted. Many residents have expressed concern on a Facebook page called Save Troy's Trees that student Zach Kildore created, and all of us who care about that issue, thank him. I don't believe that Facebook is accessible to the public anymore because it has done its job. This issue should be a bipartisan issue since it affects Troy's economic as well as aesthetic future. Let me remind Council again that the consultant from the quarter study told us that our trees were our most valuable assets. This is an issue that affects all residents, residential and commercial, Democrat or Republican, doesn't matter. I have a list of nine areas that the contributors to the Facebook page that I mentioned have identified, and I have given each of you a copy. In the September 13th, 2011 Planning Commission meeting, the Assistant City Attorney and Brent Savidant both stated that there was never a tree preservation for Troy, policy for Troy. However, I have in my possession a 45-page tree preservation policy for Troy dated 2005. If there's any doubt about its purpose to preserve trees, I will read just a segment. It says, "If accroachment into tree protection area occurs resulting in irreparable damage to the trees or the area inside the tree protection area, a stop work order will be issued," and on and on, there are a lot of other things that'll happen. In 2005, revision to the tree preservation policy was drafted by city staff and presented by Carol Anderson, then Director of Parks and Recreation. A revision had been called for by residents who thought that the current policy was too weak and did not meet the standards of policies in surrounding cities. As further evidence that a tree preservation policy did indeed exist, I can clearly recall Ms. Anderson pointing out the differences between the then-existing tree provision, preservation policy and the revision. To further prove prior existence of a policy, I would also point to a plot of land on Long Lake Road east of Rochester Road where trees were tagged as part of Troy's preservation policy. I think we've now established that there was a policy prior to 2005. I think we can also agree that we do not have a current tree policy. I have a memo from Mr. Zurelag dated October 12, 2011, in which he states that we do not have a tree preservation policy. He goes on to say that we have more trees now than we had 100 years ago. Of course, that is true, since Troy was a farming community 100 years ago. The point is that we now have valuable, mature trees, and we would like The point is that we now have valuable, mature trees, and we would like to keep them for both aesthetic and economic reasons. Further in his memo, he points to the new zoning ordinances which offer incentives to developers to preserve trees. Nothing in it is mandatory, and it is not working to preserve our trees. The two thousand and five proposed revision to the policy was poorly handled by the council at that time. It was at first approved, and then it was rejected, and finally, it was postponed indefinitely. I have a record of all those votes. Once our trees are destroyed, there will be no going back. It takes many decades for trees to grow and mature. We have only to look to cities that have not protected their trees to see how barren and even ugly a city can be with no trees. Spring is on the way, and if you do not pass a resolution to protect our trees now, Troy will be stripped of its, of its beautiful green coat that sets it apart and makes it a place that draws people to it. Much damage has already been done. Please pass a resolution tonight directing staff to produce a tree preservation ordinance by the next meeting. There is absolutely no time to waste. Once our trees are gone, we cannot bring them back. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bernardi.
Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. First, Madam Mayor, I respectfully suggest that while these personal attacks continue on you, under the circumstances that you vacate the chair to mayor pro temp. For you to maintain order and remain impartial would be almost impossible. As the mayor remarks, made to the women in general, it is very obvious that the mayor's opponents will stop at nothing to discredit her, to suggest that she is responsible for a beat-in that was a result of a barbed-rail, a stoop-in to a new low. During the last three hundred years, people have come from all over the world to start a new life in this country. In this area, the Midwest, most of them came from Europe, a continent that has suffered sanctions of war, occupation, discrimination, brutality, and suffering. The horrors of war cannot and should not be forgotten, but those European immigrants put their prejudices, prejudices behind them and formed the most multinational, multicultural, multi-ethnic nation in the world, and they're called Americans. They're not British Americans, or German Americans, or Italian Americans, or European Americans. They're just called Americans. And when outsiders such as Miss Suk Rosensen and Mr. Daniel Clickborn come into our city and attack our mayor and our citizens and our community, it's time to tell Ms. Hodges that if she wants to use our city as a battleground for her special interest colleagues, then I say, bring it on. Last month, two weeks before we suffered these ethnic attacks, we were threatened by the Asian Alliance because our cops picked up two Asian prostitutes in a massage parlor. This seemed to spark an international event with allegations of ethnic discrimination and intimidation. Now, if these girls had been your average American hookers, would any of them, anybody, have gone to back for them? No, they would have been there on their own. I consider myself to be a straight, white male, and as such, should be able to claim minority status. But if I got picked on, who am I going to go crying to? I got nobody to back me up, and I have been picked on. Twice I have been threatened for speaking out at these meetings. A few years ago, Troy City Council voted unanimously to approve a resolution to affirm marriage as union between man and woman, and I spoke in favor of the resolution. After the meeting in the parking lot, a man shouted across at me, "You're a foreigner. You have no rights here." Could I claim that my heterosexual rights have been violated? What kind of, what kind of protection do I have here? Every Tuesday evening, my wife and I attend a dance at a Polish century club in Sterling Heights. We meet friends there, most of them are first- or second-generation Europeans. We lived through World War Two and the tough years that followed. We talk about the war with not even a hint of any animosity, and we dance to the Glenn Miller's American Patrol because we're all Americans. And we don't preach ethnic understanding, we live it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Savage.
Good evening, Mr. Grechek.
Good evening, Mayor Daniels, counsel. I, I was going to come in and talk, a gentleman from our new, our new citizen here in Troy. Dittos to that gentleman, welcome, and welcome to Troy. Those are the kind of people we need here in Troy. I, I picked up this paper the other day, and I had to laugh. It was, I missed a couple of the last meetings, and I saw what was going on in this paper. He, he should have been here, our new citizen should have been here when, when Councilman Dane Slater had his comments about the taxes, the library taxes. Of course, he got away with that. Well, he thinks he got away with it. I hope he didn't. But anyway, so I'll be clean today. And in reference to the, the month of February, Mayor Daniels, I heart you. I like to, I had a heart attack back in, and I have a Beaumont doctor and a Beaumont cardiologist. I had a heart attack back when I was fifty-one. There's a great book out there, Before the Heart Attacks, by Dr. Supperko. Great book, if anybody wants to read that book. I, I limited myself to, to a diet of hardly any fat, but you have to have some fat. Olive oil and canola are good fats. So this, this book is, is great if you, if you want to read a book about how to prevent a heart attack. And also, know your cholesterol, and not just the good cholesterol, but the, and not just the total cholesterol, but the good and the bad cholesterol. Those are the numbers you have to know, so if you go to your doctor. You could have a good cholesterol, but you would still be in trouble. So I guess that's all I'd like to say, besides, I shouldn't go back to this, but what, what we need in this country is to, we need to eliminate collective bargaining for public sector unions. All we're doing is, all they're doing is bargaining against us. And what's happening in, the other thing that's happening in Wayne County, that scares me for, I hope Oakland County's okay. I think, I've always felt good about Al Brooks Patterson, but he scared me this last week, but I think he'll, he'll come around. But what's going on in Wayne County, that's been going on for a long time, and what they did, what, what big government did to the city of Detroit, Detroit, city of Detroit was supposed to be model city back in the sixties, and look what they've done to Detroit. And, and the corruption in, in Wayne County. And, and this, Turkeha Mullins gets a, gets a big severance package to go to another city job. I hope we don't have the same thing here in Troy where people leave the jobs, get a big pension, and then come back to work again. That, that's not right. To me, morally, if you're a city employee or, or you're on the, on the city dole, you shouldn't be taking big pensions and then coming back for big, big wages again. It happened in, in the city of California, Bell City in California, where these people were taking huge, huge pay. And that's what's killing this country. We need to, we need to turn that around. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and counsel. Michelle Hodges, Troy Chamber. Your business community comes before you tonight to give you an update on our efforts to relieve the Troy taxpayer of any obligation relative to the operating and maintenance costs of the Troy Transit Center. We're excited about this opportunity to transform the model of delivering important infrastructure while reducing that reliance on the taxpayer. As promised in our January seventeenth commitment to you to convene our first meeting of that tactical group prior to March first, I'm here to tell you that that was accomplished on February fifteenth, and a number of outcomes are coming from that meeting. The first of which is we confirmed the goal of what we were hoping to achieve in terms of fulfilling the need to cover the costs of all of the operating costs. We also looked at the need to avoid philanthropy. We'd prefer to reserve that for groups like the Boys and Girls Club and things of that nature, or any just out-of-pocket, one-time, single payments. We're looking for more structural solutions that are long-term and sustainable. And also, as part of that goal discussion, we identified a stretch goal of hoping to exceed what is actually needed so that we can continue on an ongoing basis to support the transit center in a significant way. The next item that we discussed was trying to put numbers around the gap and figure out exactly what the gap is so that we know what we are pursuing. We're making progress in that regard, and we began to develop, will continue to contribute to the list of things that we think we can go after in terms of filling this gap, and I can assure you that that list is solid. Next, we established a preliminary timeline, the first of which is the most important item, which is to have a functional model in place in order to support those costs from day one of operations, which would be in the fall of two thousand and thirteen. And to encourage swift action and accountability on our part, we've established a regular meeting schedule that is timed with your council meetings so that we can report back to you at least monthly as to where things stand with this effort. We then identified some immediate action items, which include meeting with city staff to determine some of the mechanics, so we know who's negotiating what, what the different contractual obligations and discussions of that nature need to be. We talked more about how we want to build out the team so we have the greatest amount of talent on that team so that the outcomes are of the highest credibility and sustainability. So for example, Maridor is inviting its top financial experts to become a part of this effort. And then, of course, another important action item is to come to you tonight and ask that you approve one of the most important cost control opportunities, which is the hiring of the construction manager at risk tonight. We see that as a prudent step and hope that you will vote favorably on that. In summary, we've given you and our community a pledge that we take very seriously, and we will not fail. In fact, it is our goal to over-deliver. We want nothing more than a remarkable success that will empower Troy to continue its legacy of strong, notable leadership. So thank you for this opportunity and for your trust, and we will not let you down in any way, shape, or form.
Thank you, Mrs. Hodges.
Good evening.
Good evening. Tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of the First Amendment rights of an elected public official. Since she took office in November, she's been attacked by her political opponents because she has different views. Her opponents preach tolerance, but they are intolerant of anyone who disagrees with them. She's kept her campaign promises and behaved admirably under fire with gracious professionalism at one of the lowest-paid jobs in Troy. This nonpartisan council is highly partisan, subtly from council members, "I liked your poem, but we're builders too," and viciously from some trying to nullify the last election. The mayor was elected by a majority of those who bothered to vote. The city clerk considered it a good turnout. Recalls are for crimes or gross misconduct in office, not for embarrassing the city in liberal circles. The reasons for recalling our mayor boil down to two: her opposition to the transit center and using words that offend a certain group of people. She campaigned on her opposition to the transit center, and the debt we're passing on to the next generation. Supporters had ten years into planning it, and she's criticized for allowing a patent attorney an hour to give his ideas? He presented lots of data about the high subsidies for mass transit and trains in particular. His crime concerns were legitimate and could be interpreted by some as racist. However, there have been buggies on the Paint Creek Trail in Rochester, hardly an area known for minorities. Any deserted area is a risk for people traveling alone, especially women. People alter their habits based on fear regardless of crime statistics. No wonder the shopping center's concerned about a twenty-four-hour bus station with no one around all weekend when no buses are running, and the elevators and stairs by the lonely footbridge that serves ten trains and sixty-six people a day? Meanwhile, residents are told they will have to accept lower police services, but this will cost the city any extra patrol time. Our mayor has apologized for her poor choice of words in June before she was elected, and has asked for forgiveness. If you have a strong stomach and can wade through the venomous comments on the Troy Patch, you can find her actual written apology and videotape piece together from the exchange. The last part is obviously from later, after her apology was refused. Her recent comments about the gay lifestyle being dangerous are inconveniently true, regardless of what's considered politically correct. People are choosing to be offended by what was said, and sometimes the filters on their ears amplify certain things and ignore others. She's been publicly criticized by a former mayor for changing the oath when she explained that the city charter's covered under the Michigan Constitution. There was no public apology. Mayor Daniels also explained the whimsical document comment, which made sense to me, but not her opponents. Brooks Patterson is doing the same thing to Mayor Daniels that she did to the city manager, only worse, because he knows better, having many years of experience in government. Mr. Zurlag has already defended himself quite well, eight pages to her five. A sitting county executive rebuking a first-term mayor while claiming to defend the honor of a public servant is the height of hypocrisy. Patterson's disdain for social conservatives is well-known. Instead of viewing them as valued coalition partners, his big tent theory would like to be rid of them, leaving only country-club Republicans. He doesn't realize they are the foot soldiers that help him win elections. Patterson knows exactly what he's doing. He's throwing Daniels under the bus, giving fuel to her recall campaign. Some liberals in Troy are no better. They're criticizing her for her actions and doing worse than